Okay, if everybody would mute themselves, please. I call the budget work session to order. All board members are present. It's nice to see you all virtually. Mr. Lemay, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would now like to call on Dr. Martslove for the review of our budget development presentation.
Thank you. Hopefully, everyone can see the screen with the preliminary budget slide right now. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm going to get started and share some information about the budget. Some of it you've already heard, some of it is updated, and there's a few new pieces as requested that are. Our planning priorities remain to preserve academic and extracurricular programming for students wherever we can. We want to build and manage a fiscally responsible budget that taxpayers can support and prioritize expense reductions and maximize potential savings. This is a huge challenge, particularly with what's happened in the last several weeks with the COVID-19 virus that has caused much of Western New York to shut down and the number of people to lose jobs and have to be treated for their health issues and things of that nature. So it's certainly a difficult time, not just in Western New York, but all over the world with what's going on. As we've gone forward in our budget timeline, we started back in January looking at our program continuation report and what the required expense increases would be. We then went through the tax cap review, which I heard just today may be changing slightly for this coming year's budget. I'll let you know more information as soon as I hear that. We looked at our initial revenue outlook and potential budget reduction options, such as our savings last year from changing our transportation operations. In our March board meeting and budget forum, we had our preliminary budget presentation. We considered the proposition resolutions for a new capital project. And then tonight, we're going to continue to review budget items, revenue that may come into the district as well as cost components. And then at some juncture, we're going to have to talk about the possibility of budget reduction items. And then we will look at our next board meeting, which originally was to adopt the proposed budget by the Board of Education. This has changed because yesterday it was announced that all budget and school board of election votes are being pushed back to after two and first. The April 21 date is connected to the meeting where we have to adopt the budget by law. So depending on when the date is ascribed from state for our new budget vote and Board of Education election, we'll determine whether or not we have to have a special board meeting, perhaps in early May, to adopt the budget. But I'll let you know more as soon as we find out. And then May 7th, tentatively right now, is our annual budget hearing where we present the budget yet again. And we have our PTSA School Board Candidates Night that takes place for Board of Education candidates to share their views and what they'd like to see moving forward with our school district. And then May 19th was going to be the vote, but that is now in flux and has changed. What does our current budget, the way it's set up now, do? It maintains the current level of instructional and extracurricular programming for students. Certainly, that's one of our main goals. It maintains a focus on physical, mental, emotional wellbeing of students at all levels and continues to offer expansive advanced placement, course selection, and supports university and college partnerships, such as ones we have with Syracuse University, Niagara University, the University of Buffalo, and several other colleges that engage in partnerships with us, allowing students to take college courses while they're still in high school that are tuition-free or very close to being tuition-free. The budget also supports the third year of our three-year plan to strengthen administrative support at the elementary and high school level. It continues to support a high level of professional development for all teachers and staff members. And we want to make sure, again, being fiscally responsible, we're keeping the tax levy increase below the state tax cap. So one of the items the board wanted to learn more about and hear more about is the possibility of class size reduction. A few important points here that I think is important for everyone to know. First, in order to reduce class size at any grade level, we would need to add FTEs, our full-time equivalents, to the school district. We calculate the cost of these to be about $100,000 each. That might be a little high in the first year or first few years, but it's important to realize that it's just not the cost of the salary. It includes things like payroll taxes, it includes health insurance, it includes contributions to the retirement system. So all those different benefits can drive the cost of a new employee upward in the school district. So we have in the past reduced class size at the kindergarten level. Then the following year, we reduced it at first and second grade. So the next particular target grade would be grade three. And if we were to reduce it from a range of 23 to 27 down to a range of 22 to 26, we'd need to add six FTEs at a maximum, which would cost the district $600,000. So given the uncertainty of New York State revenues, I would not recommend pursuing this option at this time. It doesn't mean we couldn't do it at a later date or in a subsequent budget year, but there's just a lot of unknowns and it makes it very tricky to pursue something like this for next year's budget. We also had a couple of presentations, one in December and one earlier this month on math, and in particular, looking at high school math and what we can do to better support students. One of the ideas that came from that was a double math period for geometry regions and algebra two regions, with the understanding that students that decide to take those courses would need to make a strong level of commitment and not simply drop those courses down to a non-regents level if it became more challenging. In order to do this, we would need a .4 FTE for each course taught at each high school. So 2.4 addition of staffing would cost the district about $240,000. And again, given the uncertainty of New York State revenues and furthermore, what could happen with New York State revenues throughout the school year, I would not consider this option at this time unless we could find some better way or some sort of offset that might be able to allow us to pilot it for one or more of our high schools. So we'll see about that, but as of right now, it's not something that's a strongly recommended item. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Matorski now. He's going to talk about expenses and revenues and walk us through some other pieces to the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Martslove. This information is the continuation expense. Again, all of these dollars have been verified over the last few months. And this is what the district requires to continue with their programs based upon our current 2019-2020 level. So salaries is about $4.7 million increase. The social security or payroll taxes that the district must pay would be a $300,000 increase. Health insurance is $195,000, and our BOSI's cooperative services is $400,000. So that brings us to the $5,607,253 increase for the district's 2020-21 preliminary budget for the continuation expenses. As Dr. Martslove mentioned in one of the earlier slides, this is the final phase of the administrative support at the elementary and high school level, and that is an increase of $154,000. And then we had an initial request for additional $100,000 in equipment that would be used district-wide. So that support increase amount would be $254,000. Looking at some anticipated expense reductions, and these are what we were reviewing at our last meeting, and they are to really balance our budget. We have the transportation savings of $500,000 we mentioned in the past. We are going to remove that equipment increase you just saw of $100,000. We are projecting savings in the New York State retirement system and the teachers' retirement systems, and that's $800,000 in total. And then a comprehensive budget review, which is really $446,361. And that is made up of various contract services, supplies, and some salaries and benefits items that we are able to identify as being savings from the prior year as well as continuing in this year. So that creates a expense reduction of $1846,361. So the summary there is then a net increase of $414,892. Add that to our current 19-20 budget. We have a preliminary budget of $199,730, and that represents a 2.06% budget increase. So the issue with state aid is something that we are all acutely aware. I listened to the governor additionally this morning or afternoon, whenever he had his daily, it seems like, his daily press conference. And when he said, "No one is held harmless from reality," I can't protect you from reality. Today, he also was mentioning that the potential reduction would be based upon the reductions they receive quarterly from revenue. So we do not know what that will be, and I don't think anyone at this point would know what they will be. So as we move forward, you will see that these are the same revenue increases that we projected in the past to balance the budget. So the foundation aid increase, the $585,000, is still there. The excess cost of aid is a slight decrease of $33,497. Transportation aid is up by about $244,000. BOSI's aid is up by $82,000, a little decrease in the categorical aids of almost $19,000. And the largest decrease is in building aid of $860,481. So all of those together result in no increase from last year's state aid to this year's. Looking at the tax cap, again, we are at a tax cap number for this year of 2.76%. That equates to a budget or levy increase of $3489,92 for 2.75%. So that's under the cap as we know it today. So if there are changes in that, we will certainly make adjustments as necessary. So looking at the summary on the revenue budget, again, you're looking at the tax levy increase, no state aid, and the other revenue increase, which is made up of, again, the major issues there was going to be a combination of interest earnings increase and sales tax increases of $525,800. And again, we are aware that those items are likely to change next year, but at this time, there is no understanding on what those changes may be. So for this presentation, those are still in there, and that equals a revenue increase of $414,892. And that creates the balanced revenue budget of $199,197. So here's the summary again, same number on the total budget, increase of 2.06%. Estimated tax levy increase of 2.75%. And the tax rate increases are again at that same 2.75% number. And those increases do not consider any changes in equalization rates or assessment changes, since those are not yet available. If you were to project those out, we would have for a valued home of $150,000 in our district. The increase for basic star subsidy would be $58.99, and enhanced star would be $4198, using the people who are still qualifying for star under the old program. And then again, looking at how we compare over a five-year period of time, you see that our budget increases, our tax levy increases, and our tax rate increases have all been pretty much in the same trend. And you can see that the 2.06 on the budget is actually one of the lowest years we've seen in quite some time. The levy increase is pretty much right in the average of 2.75, and the tax rate is 2.75. But keep in mind that when we do receive actual assessment changes, that may go down as in prior years. So again, the tax levy is at or below the tax cap in every one of these years. So with that, again, Dr. Martslove already went over the information at the beginning. The main thing here is, I think, the budget vote, the date is scheduled sometime in June. And so with that information, I think we're ready to handle questions. Oh, do you want to go?
Yeah, you can review this.
So the social security improvement project, just as a follow-up. We have the funding mechanism for that is the debt funding. And the most important thing I can state about that is those funds are available. So if we have any further types of adjustments to revenue or expenses, we still have the ability to do that, and this will, in some respect, bring school aid into our district in the future. The capital reserve funding, those dollars are items we have saved. And just to review the process for that, capital reserves can only be, the funding item is put in as referenced by the proposition that approved the reserve, and that funding cannot be used for anything else other than what was stated in the original proposition. Any dollars that are to be expended from those reserves must also occur from a public proposition, and this would be part of and is part of the bond proposition that would go to the voters this coming year in the vote. The budget appropriations of $350,000 is all part of our debt service plan, and that would be a one-year appropriation that would occur. So that allows the total funding to be $43,244,273. And again, the most important point there is there would be no local tax increase to complete this project work. And the summary there on the items, again, main thing is to improve the security of all of our buildings as well as the safety. So we're addressing secured entrances, emergency lockdown systems, improving the shelter protection on windows and doors in specific locations, adding security barriers in the main entrances, updating locks in classrooms where necessary. Additional lighting will be added for emergency circumstances when the power goes out. We're adding additional security cameras to improve what we are installing through a current program. Wayfinding signage is the signage that will allow us to have better flow within our buildings and on our sites. The improved bus slopes and renovated parking lots are going to improve the safety for students at those schools. And then there's roof replacement, which is really a safety issue because all of our roofs are past the useful life of 30 years. So usually, roofs are warranted for 25 years. So the fact that we're already going to be when this project is, would be underway, would be about five years past the useful life, shows that we have maintained them, but they are in need of replacement. So now we're at the point where, again, you see the three items that are on the ballot, the proposed budget, the capital project, and then the school board elections. And again, now the vote date will, of course, be changed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matorski and Dr. Martslove. We will now begin our discussion. Thank you, everybody, for having microphones muted. It really helped with being able to hear the presentation. Yes, Eric, I agree with the round of applause signal there. So if you have any questions on the budget to contribute for discussion, please just raise your hand. I'll call on you, and then you can unmute yourselves. We'll start with Sean.
Thank you. I have four questions here I'd like to ask. We'll try and keep them in order here. Dr. Martslove, you talked about piloting a double math program in lieu of adding the 2.4 full-time employees, potentially piloting at one of the high schools or something like that. Is that basically, you didn't talk too much about that, but what would that cost? And I mean, are you looking at a .08 to add for full-time to pilot that? Or is that something we could use existing staff and do?
No, it's a .4 per classroom. So there's two subjects that would need those individuals. So you'd need a .4 if you were going to pilot it in one subject at one school, which would be around $40,000.
Okay, so that wouldn't be existing resources, okay. Switching over to class sizes, I know we did a thing on curricular extensions and saw how a lot of those were exceeding. Is that something that we have to address in the budget? Or is that something that's going to be able to be addressed elsewhere next year, that is?
I'm sorry, can you please clarify your question, curriculum extension?
The class sizes for curriculum extensions. We saw in the report a few months ago that some of the, especially in the kindergarten classes, were well over 30 for some of their classes and that sort of stuff. And I know we had said that we're going to address it. Is that something that we need to look at in the budget for next year? Or is that something you think we're going to be able to do just through other means?
I guess, Mr. Lemay, we've had this conversation for several years. It would not be my recommendation to add staff for curriculum extension just because there are some with a higher class size. If the board thinks that this is a critically important area and wants it addressed, you know, we can go ahead and address that, but that's going to have implications in other parts of the budget. We're mildly preparing for, how big of cuts are we going to have to make throughout the year? Because if the legislature gives Governor Cuomo the ability to unilaterally cut school aid throughout the year four different times, it's going to be a very rough fiscal year for every school district in the state of New York. So I would be reluctant to add spending expenditures anywhere in the budget that weren't just unbelievably critically important at this juncture.
So then I assume by your reply that to help alleviate the curricular extensions class size issue, we would have to add new staff, so that would be a budgetary item?
That's correct.
Okay. Two more questions, and then I'll heed the floor, so to speak. Mr. Matorski, you mentioned proposed equipment of $100,000. And then the next slide showed taking that equipment back out. Are there any repercussions? I don't know what that equipment is. I'm not quite sure. I don't recall any presentations previously about what that $100,000 was. So are there any repercussions to postponing the purchase of that equipment?
I would say no. The idea to add the equipment was to provide some additional resources to our schools next year because we are implementing this year and next year. It's a two-year plan to facilitate equipment purchases for the Music Capital Project who are regular general fund. So that would have freed up some additional dollars to provide to buildings for regular items. Our buildings are aware of this, and they've worked well with us, and they appreciate what we're doing. So that would just have given them some additional items. So all it really is doing is putting the potential purchase of some of their items off one year.
Okay, no, that's very understandable. I appreciate that. I ask this question every year, but just for the record, Mr. Matorski, what's the difference between STAR Basic and STAR Enhanced? I know you had mentioned that one of, or the program had been deprecated, I believe, in some fashion. But if you could just kind of explain what the difference is, I appreciate it.
The STAR Basic program would really be for people who are not senior citizens. When you get to be a senior citizen and your income levels are below the state-required mandates, and usually it's somewhere around, I believe, $125,000, and they will get the enhanced STAR, but it varies. And that really, the amount of the STAR deduction will vary by school district, too. So that really is the major difference. The other piece, though, that you might be alluding to is anyone who sells a home at this point or who buys a home, they do not qualify for the STAR reduction on their tax bill. That comes as a credit on their tax return. So that's really the other side of the program that's out there. And the final thing I'll say is I believe that they have frozen the STAR increases now. At least that was a proposal, again, in the state budget. So whether that becomes a law, then we'll find out when the state budget is passed.
Great. Thank you, guys, very much.
Mr. Marts, you raised your hand up previously. Are you still interested? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, so a bunch of questions. Sorry about that. So I know we were obligated to send out budget notices, and I think we learned of the date being pushed back after the required date to send out the notices. Is this correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So there'll be some confusion, I guess, in our community. I would assume.
My thinking is that it will be widely publicized once there is an actual date. But I think as all school districts are in the same position, and we're going to see directives coming from New York State on what we're to do and when we're to do it. And because of how they like to control what we do, I think it will be very clear and it'll be covered by all the news.
Okay, just kind of in random order, I guess, in my notes. It seems possible we might have to push back to meet the candidates night. Just wanted to make that assumption or statement. Dr. Martslove, you mentioned that you thought our tax cap number might be changing. Does anyone think that there's a chance that the state might lift the tax cap or amend the tax cap requirements to allow local authorities to make up some of the missing revenue?
I haven't heard that. I talked to one of our assembly people today who mentioned there could be some adjustments to the tax cap. But I think they need to be very careful about that because the tax cap is immensely popular across the state. So any changes or delays, or we're not going to do it this year, we'll pick it up again next year. I don't know how well that will go politically for a number of people in office. I just think, given all that's happened economically across the state, it would be very challenging. You know, one of the things we could consider if we wanted to is exceeding the tax cap. But, you know, given everything that's happened already, I would be reluctant to recommend that.
Thanks. Has any construction begun on the music upgrades at this point?
Yes, we have started some construction, but that was stopped, I believe it was late last week, when a change came from the governor that construction workers should not be working. There is now a discussion around whether or not those construction workers can be considered essential. And once we have clarity on that from a legal standpoint, we would like to bring them back and get them working again. So that could be, you know, as early as this week, or it could be a long ways off yet. We don't know.
Okay, since we made our assumptions on the music project and took bonds out based on expected reimbursement from the state, is it possible that that might change on that project, or is that kind of locked in, do you think?
I'm sorry, what might change?
Our reimbursement on the music project.
That could change at any time. It's up to the governor and what he wants to do. He could change it, could alter it, he could eliminate it, he could double it and add to it. We don't know. But for our school district, it's a great way to try to bring in additional revenue from. from New York State at this time and really enhance the facilities of our school district.
Okay. And then does the... Does the current New York State financial situation put into question our safety upgrades project in terms of either finances or the ability to obtain votes if our voting happens in a distant fashion, like not in person?
That's difficult to predict. We don't know what they're going to do. So, for example, the governor could come out tomorrow and say, "Any school budget that's passed by a school board that's under the tax gap is considered passed. No one will run for school board this year. Everyone will be delayed by one year." That could be one pretty simple, pretty easy solution to the difficulty of bringing people together and maintaining social distancing. I don't know that that'll happen, but that's a possibility. So, you know, a famous Cuomo once said, "When you're in a dark room, take small steps." And that was, of course, his father, Mario Cuomo, who said that. And that makes a lot of sense right now as we're trying to take lots and lots of small steps. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of, you know, bright shining answers for everybody. But that's going to come with time. And I think as we move forward and things clarify, I think everyone, I think, will be okay.
Okay. And then regarding the safety project, what is our expected, either dollar amount or percentage, amount of reimbursement that we're expecting to get from the state at the time that we filed the paperwork? I know that might change at this point. But do we have, like, a rough ballpark? Like, is it 50%? Is it 80%?
It's 59.5% today. So that would be, once you approve the project, that percentage is locked in unless, like Dr. Martzloff said, the governor would do a retroactive change to the funding formulas.
Okay. If we find out in advance that the state is slashing funding on various projects like this, could you let us know if you find that out?
Sure.
Yeah, of course we would. And then you're going to have some difficult choices to make. Are you going to stop the construction? You know, how close are we to being finished at different sites? Doesn't make sense to go forward and use more local dollars or more money in the capital reserve? I mean, there's a whole bunch of options that would have to be discussed at that time.
Yeah, I'm just worried about the potential impacts of any cuts that are unanticipated. If, you know, say, 60% of the project, 59% of the project we're expecting reimbursement on, on $43 million doesn't come through, and we're left holding the bag on, you know, $20 or $30 million, that's going to really affect our ability to make good budgets going forward, I would think.
We're lucky that 699 other school districts in New York State have the same concern.
Yeah. Yeah. So this budget assumes the same funding from the state as last year. If we have a reduction in state aid, how will we address this?
That's going to have to be discussed at the time, Mr. Meckler. It depends when it happens. Right now, they're saying the same amount of state aid. But what they said to clarify that today is that categorical aids don't count in that. So, for example, if we have a decrease in building aid for next year, we would experience that decrease in building aid. So, you know, being at zero is like best-case scenario right now. But at some juncture, we'll have to address it. For now, it would be my recommendation to say that we would address that using reserve funds. Also to address it in the future with potential budget cuts. Because as bad as it's going to be this year, throughout the year, it's going to be worse a year from now. Budget process a year from now will be, who do you want to take away from? Which programs do you want to reduce or eliminate? Which staffing levels do you want to increase? There will be no, you know, enjoyable decisions in that process, I don't believe.
Okay. Yeah, so you see the impact out one year more so than initially? Like, we might be able to bridge the gap this year with reserve funds?
Yeah, I also think there's a chance the federal government might decide to redup and give money to the state and to schools to help us maintain for a year. But that happened back in 2008. And then as soon as that federal money went away, everyone had to make massive cuts, which we did here in 2011, '12.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. I have one more, and that's it. Since the public won't be voting until June 1st at the earliest, would we want to consider changing our budget adoption cycle a little bit since we're right now operating with little clarity? And that clarity might improve with time.
I'm sorry, Mark, is that a question for myself or for Dr. Martzloff?
I guess everyone. My own opinion is that since nobody's voting on this budget until June 1st, we ought to delay our process a little bit in the hopes that we would gain more clarity in the budget situation in the meantime. I don't see any downside to it.
No, I agree with you. I guess I'm just looking for clarity as well because I thought when Dr. Martzloff was speaking that I heard something about the potential of us adjusting our calendar anyways. Dr. Martzloff, can you speak on that at all?
Yeah, that would make sense to me. Since any potential vote isn't going to happen until after June 1st, and we don't know when that date would be, I would wait and don't adopt the budget until the required timeline is due. And then look to adopt it at that time. And by that juncture, we'd also have a little more clarity on our revenues, a little more clarity on state aid, a little more clarity on any potential federal money that might come in, a little more clarity on what the plan is going forward for throughout next year from the governor. So there's a lot of aspects that really just need time to crystallize.
I agree. So, Mark, what I'm thinking is that at our April 17th or April 21st, at our April 21st meeting, we would hopefully by then have more information to be able to make a motion on a new timeline, that we could approve a new timeline going forward. That's my guess on that. I'm going to go back to Sean. But Sean, before I do, real quick, I'm going to call on Lynn because she had an update regarding the postings of our announcements to the media.
Yeah, the media, Buffalo Business First and Amherst B reached out to me and said they will not be publishing. So they are not going to be publishing anything until further notice.
Okay, thank you. Then Sean, did you have a follow-up question before I go over to Eric, who had his hand up also?
Yep. Mr. Metersky, I think you had mentioned it in your presentation. Aren't there actual legal timelines for us to adopt the budget? It has to be within X amount of days, I believe, of the actual vote. So it would kind of default that the April 21st, we're not going to be able to adopt it?
Well, the adoption could potentially occur. However, you do have legal timelines that must be filed for notifying the public as well as holding that annual meeting. That's a requirement in law, that that annual meeting has to be, I believe it's no sooner than seven days before the budget vote and no greater than 14 days before the budget vote. So yes, that's all impacted. So it does make sense to hear what more information we're going to receive in the next month.
Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to switch to Eric.
Yes, thank you, Teresa. And thanks, Scott and Tom, for that presentation. I guess I want to just start by saying, we are now meeting at the height of this crisis, maybe not even at the height of the crisis. It's still, there's still a lot of uncertainty in front of us. In fact, there's maximum uncertainty. So I guess I just want to educate myself on what areas of the budget do we have any flexibility? Rather than waiting until next year after a budget is passed, what flexibility do we have before the budget is passed to perhaps sharpen our pencils and really shave some costs out of the budget? Is there anything that we can be looking at? So that not only are we concerned about the actual budget and the expenses and the revenue, but I'm also concerned about optics. What is the community kind of paying attention to? And if, I guess if we were just to plow ahead as if nothing were happening, that would seem a little tone-deaf to the people I'm talking to. So any flexibility before we actually approve a budget?
I think there's $200 million worth of flexibility, to be quite frank. But you have to make some really hard decisions then because when you decide, if you decide to make cuts from that $200 million, that's impacting people, it's impacting staffing, it's impacting... It could just be, you know, reduced to equipment budgets by a certain percentage or the supply budget by a certain percentage. But, you know, you're not going to save that much money compared to the total budget by doing items like that. The cost of school districts really is people. It's their salaries, and it's their benefits.
Right. Which is why I feel like there isn't $200 million that can be shaved right now because there's contract, there's labor obligations, and there are things that would require sort of dropping a bomb into the district right now. So short of $200 million, are we only talking about a few hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars that can be adjusted going forward?
No, we can look at a lot more than that. You know, I'll give you some, just examples off the top of my head. A lot of people have talked about class size. You want to save a significant amount of money? We could raise class sizes at different grade levels. We could go to the high school level and say, "If your high school course does not have at least 18 students in it, it's not running." And that could cause a number of layoffs and staff reductions and save a tremendous amount of money. We could look at things like reducing facility staff, reducing other staff or like teacher aides and other people that support. There's a lot of different areas across the district that we could make reductions in. The problem comes in, Mr. Bornstein, in this short timeframe, is it's going to cause a great deal of concern, number one. And number two, people aren't going to have much of a chance to weigh in. And whenever people don't have a chance to weigh in, particularly in our school district, it does not go well. And I don't want to set the board or the community up for that. But I am open to making reasonable, thoughtful reductions that, you know, most people can agree should happen. So we certainly have an open mind. It's not going to be a one-time thing where we make some reductions and we're done. We're going to make some reductions, then we're going to make other reductions. And later on, we'll make further reductions. And next year, we'll make lots of reductions. It's just, this is not going to be easy for a long time, is the best way I can put it. And so when you're taking all that into account, I think you have to be very careful about cutting too much too fast.
Yeah. Tom, I think I stepped over something you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mary next.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the budget presentation. And I'm reflecting on how much can change so quickly. A year ago at this time, safety and security was the topic of conversation, and it was close to Parkland shooting. And now we have this capital project put together for that. And what a different time this is. Even last month and throughout this entire budget season, we've heard from a lot of stakeholders about class size. We've also explored math and AIS and the proposals to lower class size. And both AIS, increasing AIS opportunities for math, all felt really important to me. And I hear why people want these things. I agree with them. But hearing the budget forecast and what's to come, you know, when you talk about sharpening pencils, Eric, I think one of the things we're looking at is we had a lot of items that we wanted to consider to make our education even better. In Williamsville, it's already fantastic. But, you know, we had opportunities on the table to help math support and to lower class sizes. And to do that in a time where we know cuts are coming, I mean, that already feels like a cut to me because I felt like that was something that would really enhance our budget. And it just appears that we can't afford to do that. My question is about the process of when this starts to happen. I know it's so uncertain right now because we just don't know what these cuts will look like. We don't know what we'll get. We don't know what they'll take. When those things start to develop, what will our process be as far as determining how we cut? Because I know there are so many things that are near and dear to so many people. And so will we use the structure of community forums? Will we have... Do you think there will be situations where we'll have to make immediate cuts because of this quarterly plan that you shared? What will that look like going forward into the next school year?
I would... The best way I can answer that, Mrs. Beeger, is this, is that it depends on how large these cuts are, is the best way I can put it. It would be my recommendation, sitting here tonight, to say, "Let's use reserve funds, let's use federal aid, let's look at some small cuts here and there" to get through to next budget season, at which time you would want to have community forums, you'd want to have input, you'd want to have people coming out and sharing things. I know in 2012, we had, I think somebody mentioned this at a past board meeting, online opportunities for people to put in ideas for budget cuts and reductions in the Williamsville Central School District, things of that nature. You really want to put together a process to gain a great deal of information so that we can be as smart as possible about what decisions are made because none of those decisions are going to lead to, you know, a joyful result for anybody. So it's going to be difficult, but that would be my recommendation at this time.
I agree, and that makes sense. So thank you for that, and we'll see what comes. Hopefully, it won't be as severe as we think at this time, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go to Phil, and then after Phil will be Susan.
Hey. Thank you, Teresa. So I think a lot of good questions were just asked. Some of my own questions were asked by Mark and Sean and Eric as well. More so a comment, I suppose, just listening to the exchange that just took place. And I think Dr. Martzloff was speaking in hypotheticals about, you know, things that we could do. But I want to put on record that I'm totally against any termination of staff or teachers. We need to have their backs right now. I know these are uncertain times, but we're going to get through it. All right? We have a large reserve fund, and I say that we use it. So let's use it to get through these tough times. As to class size, I think that's kind of a long-term implementation strategy to the extent that we even reach an agreement by a majority of board members that we want to reduce class size. I think that's a long-term implementation. I don't think it happens overnight. But I think we need to keep our eye on the ball for the future. This time's going to pass, and we need to be ready for that time. So let's use our reserve funds or whatever aid we have available to get through this, the immediate future. But we need to have the back of the people who work for this district. And I'm utterly against terminating staff, employees, teachers, or anything of that sort. And I want to avoid any conversation of that. We need to look to cuts in other areas before we look to terminating people's livelihood. And right now, students need instruction. I know it's difficult to do that when we're all doing this like virtual reality stuff. But we need to see our way through this. And we're talking about, in my assessment, six months to a year. But we can get through it, and I do not want to terminate anybody's employment. So those are my comments. I have nothing to add at this point. But thank you, Teresa, for letting me chime in. And Dr. Martzloff, if you have any comments in response, feel free to share them.
I think I would just, taking your comments into account, Mr. Meyer, I would just ask that as we go through this process, as much as we want to try to use reserves, you need to be careful. It's like paying your bills with your savings account. It can work very well, it's very easy, the money is there, and you take care of your bills for the month of April. And then May rolls around. And then May rolls around, and your savings account is either gone or it's dwindled, or you don't have the reserves anymore to pay for your bills for that month. So we just have to be careful on a year-to-year basis that we don't dwindle our reserves down too much. Eventually, we're going to have to take a more balanced approach because whether this virus situation happened or not, you could tell from the governor's original budget proposal for New York State that things were going to be changing for school aid. And that included reducing school aid for districts like ours, who are suburban districts, who are doing pretty well academically. And so that's going to come along at some juncture. So we're just going to have to be, you know, very cautious and judicious as we move forward.
Okay, next goes to Dr. McClary.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, I would be making some of the same comments that others have. So I'm just going to limit my one question to Dr. Matzloff of an area, certainly not saying we should cut, but looking at the current budget, if you would talk through the theoretically slightly possible item that talked about this being the third year of going into the administrative support, you know, and changing that structure and so forth, what would be the implications or ramifications if we did not, this upcoming year, I shouldn't say unfortunately, finish up changing those positions? Would that be a significant cut?
It's in the district around $100,000. But there's also some very highly paid individuals in the current positions as they stand right now. And we also have an MOA with the Administrators Association. Because essentially, right now, you have teachers that are doing unit work of administrators. So we could get challenged on that through a different venue if we don't change it now. You know, I think it's one of those things. I think Mr. Mecca asked earlier about changing the funding of the capital project. Well, you know, if you're three feet from the finish line of the project, you know, why stop? Let's finish it up, do what we need to do. It's kind of the same idea with this particular example, Dr. McClary, that you're citing, is we're on the last year of it, it's the last change. And I think it'll position us well for the future.
Thank you, that's what I was checking. So this is the end of it. This upcoming amount would get everything into what we would like for compliance and plans. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Vanseis.
Hi, I would just like to thank Mr. Matusky, of course, once again, and Dr. Matzloff. We are always appreciative of the budget, the immense amount of time and work that is put into it. And of course, that can be said again this year. But dealing with a whole new avenue of, as we've been saying, an unprecedented and unfortunate situation, which has just heightened it to a whole different level. Hearing the governor talk, I think people, you know, they always say, oh, here we go again, you know? They say that they have no money. I truly believe at this point in time, after listening to the governor, which is impossible not to do because it's just on daily, people are truly understanding that we are in a state that we've never been in before. So, Dr. Matzloff, just a comment really, that I like the term that you used, taking a balanced approach. I just want to make sure that no one walks away here, anyone that was to listen to this, talking about cutting teachers. I don't think that's any board member's intention. Now, we might be talking about, perhaps we need to think about making cuts. But that can be various, various different things. That could be reassessing programs that we currently have, services that we currently offer, activities. And those are all different things that there's a dollar amount that maybe is too, that maybe we can redesign, you know, redesign, or how we can be creative with what we're doing, those kind of cuts if we need to get to that level. But I don't think I speak alone as a board member, but I don't think any of us are sitting here today talking about that we are in favor or even want anyone to walk away that our intention is talking about making cuts to professionals in our district right now.
No, I would agree with that. If anything, we're looking to add people. I'd love to figure out a way to do like a pilot of the math staffing to do double periods in some of our courses in high schools, as one example. But alls I'm saying is theoretically, in the future, at some juncture, that these discussions will have to be had. And we'll have to figure out what's going to be best for our district and best for our students, and move forward from there. It's not going to be an easy conversation. And there will be most likely things that are reduced and things that remain. Maybe even along the way, a few things that are enhanced. So it's just sort of the way the process unfolds over time.
Is there anyone else from the board that wishes to comment or ask a further question on anything related to our budget? Mr. Mecca.
Thanks. Just two overall comments that I think, number one, we're going to have to work on our legislative advocacy to try to increase the funding that's coming into our, into our district from both the federal and state level. But also, I think, you know, long-term, and I don't know where this funding source comes from, but I think we need to identify alternate funding sources to help the situation other than just reserve funds, you know? You know, I mean, we'd have to get real creative to figure any other funding situations out. But it's pretty hard to rely on the state. That's it.
Hi, Dr. Venider.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Many of my questions were actually already answered by fellow board members. But the one I think it might just be helpful to provide really specific clarity on for the community, it kind of stems off of Mr. Mecca's and Mr. Bornstein's questions regarding the current capital project that's being considered. So maybe, you know, one of you could just articulate why those funds are separate and we're not, as a school district, changing our minds on putting that forth for a vote, despite the fact that significant budget reductions could be coming forth from the state, potentially significant. Could you just explain the rationale on why the district wants to move forward with that? Please?
So I would give you a couple rationale reasons. The first one I will share is that the funding, as I mentioned when we reviewed it, is in place. And what we're really doing on the funding mechanism is that it's the debt service that would pay for the $29 million in bonds that would be issued. Again, if you look at some of the information provided at our presentation with the proposition, that funding doesn't happen until about 2025. That would be when you're going to actually have to bond those expenses because that's when the project will be just about done. So that means that our debt service, which we don't reduce, is going to be there to support that amount. That will not change. The other thing that is really critical is that even if the state were to cut our budget, our state aid, those dollars, if we don't do that, we'll be not able to replace the current building aid that we are receiving from past projects that will expire. So there will be an even larger reduction that would happen under that circumstance. So even though there is uncertainty there, it really is important to continue to try and backfill those dollars from past projects, past state aid dollars that we are currently receiving with a new project. And that will help us minimize the drop-off in state aid. The other piece of it is, the other dollars that are in the capital reserve, $6 million about that is appropriated. Those dollars are already there. There's no dollars that will be added in the future to provide that $6 million. It's dollars we've been able to save in past fiscal years. So it's a savings account. And then the third item to rational is, again, capital reserves, you cannot use those dollars for anything but what they were actually approved by the community. So that $6 million we're appropriating to that project, it cannot be used to support the general fund. You would have to go back and have a different type of proposition from the community to reauthorize those dollars to be moved back. But if you think about how all of those dollars are leveraged to provide state aid to the district, it really is done in a way that's financially beneficial to us in the long run.
Excellent, thank you very much. I just think that those points of clarification are important. Received some questions around that, and I just wanted it to be explained in a very clear and concise fashion, which you just did. So, thank you.
All right, I'm scanning over my little squares here. I don't see any other hands up. Dr. Matzloff or Mr. Matusky, do you want to add anything in closing?
I think I would just say we'll continue to go through this process. We will be adjusting dates along the way, given what we're being told from the state level. And I think another piece is to be patient because you are going to be, at different times, perhaps accosted by people in the community, want to know what's the answer. And I want to know it right now. You're on the school board, for crying out loud. And you just have to encourage them to please be patient. Everything is changing from day to day. We're taking small steps in a dark room, and we're going to get to the solution like we always do. But it's going to take a little bit longer. So I think those are all important points. We're not looking to make any cuts. I didn't hear anyone this evening about encouraging making cuts. We might be able to make some small ones that just make sense for the district's bottom line. But for the most part, those are going to require having a lot more in-depth conversations with our community, with our parents, even our students as we go forward. So I think we'll continue forward in a good place and make the necessary adjustments each day.
Thank you very much, Dr. Matzloff. Thank you, Mr. Matusky. I also want to thank Ms. Raddus for helping us out with the Zoom technology and for Mrs. Carey for all of her diligence in continually dropping packets at my doorway. No one can accost us if they're six feet away. So with that, I ask if there is a motion to adjourn the budget work session. Mr. Lemay, thank you. Dr. Venider, second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor for adjournment? All right, motion passes unanimously. Good night, everyone, and be safe.
Good night, thank you all.
Good night.
Bye, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Hi, Sophia.